3.9, a 3.6, and a 3.8. With planning being the highest and the first question being the most important for the board members in their opinion. Moving down policy, student achievement, finance, board operation, board performance, and board superintendent relationships, board staff relationships, and board and community relationships. The numbers were very tight. They were all in the area of 3.6, 3.8, and 3.9. Again, the top one being planning. The board's responsibility for planning was the top one. Moving on to planning. That's the first one. In reference to the board itself, this board member's opinion of the board itself. Starting out with a commendable being a four, good being a three, adequate being a two, unsatisfactory being a one, and then not observed is a zero. We range from, in a category of four, we range from 2.5 to the average of 3.0, being the bottom line. The board's area needing improvement on that line item is community input. There were board members that feel that the board did not meet that responsibility this year and monitor in progress towards achieving the district's vision and mission. There were commendables for a better majority of the board for those same categories. In that same category about you, the board member. We have, "Board member participates fully in the district planning, recognizes the importance of meaningful public participation, and supports the district vision, mission, and goals." We range from a high score of a six down to a low score of a zero or under the unsatisfactory with an average of 3.4. The comments that go along with those from individual board members, they're, it indicates that the board is in transition, that there have been new members added to the board who are having, the board members in total feel that there needs to be more collaboration between new board members and the existing board members. There needs to be more support with the superintendent in the pursuit of his duties. And that seems to be bad for that. I'm trying to make sure I get the tone of all of them. Of course, the new board members will have the opportunity to continue their training because at this point they all, both new board members have only had their one weekend training. So this is an item that the board as a whole will work on to try and improve those areas that we're lacking. Moving on to policy. About the board. Questions being operates as a policymaking body develops board policies that give administration sufficient authority, uses written policies as framework, reviews and updates the policy manual regularly as required by CUSAC, and ensures the administration develops appropriate procedures and regulates to implement the board's policy intent. And this is about the board, and we range from a high of six members being a commendable and two members not observing, two members adequate, unsatisfactory being one, so for an average of 3.3. Again, we are still hovering about the middle of the board there, and we need to work on making sure that board members understand their part in developing policy, and we will work on that. The same part, you as a board member. These are statements that you would consider made by yourself. "I am familiar with the board's policies. I use the board policy as a basis for decision-making. Leave policy implementation to the administrator's staff. Avoid involvement in the day-to-day basis of the operations of the district." Many board members felt that they did a good job with that with seven out of the eight that were involved in the evaluation. Seven thought that they were commendable. There was one unsatisfactory. There were two adequate, and the remainder were in the good category for an average of a 3.5. Reiterating, board members feel that there is some micromanagement that goes on within the board members to the superintendent's office. We're going to work on trying to avoid that in the future through trainings and through school boards coming in and advising us how to better manage that relationship with the superintendent. Let's see. We're going to try very hard to be more supportive publicly of the superintendent's decisions. That seems to be an area that comments we're lacking. And again, educating new board members on the development of policy and what that actual procedure is because that seems to be a gray area that they're not familiar with yet. And again, that is something that they have not received training yet. On to part three, about the board and how they feel about student achievement. Under determining, this is about the board member themselves, about the board, not the member. "Determines the district's educational goals with input and data from administration. Requires written curriculum with specific evaluation components in accordance with all statutes. Requires systematic evaluation and feedback on the instructional program. Uses the expertise of professional staff in development of curriculum and ensuing its focus on student achievement. Monitors the effectiveness of the instructional programs by measuring student achievement against state and local standards and other pertinent data. Sets high standards for all students based on multiple assessment measures." We came out with a grand total of 3.3 on an average out of a possible four with, it's sort of split both ways. Half the board really thought they were commendable in that. Half thought that they were good, a small portion adequate, and three members unsatisfactory. So it was really a broad, across-the-board statement of that. Again, 3.3 out of a possible four. About you, the board member. Again, this is student achievement. "I am involved in determining district educational goals. I am aware of the community's educational aspirations. I focus on improving student achievement as a basis in my educational decision-making." Out of a possible four, we received a 3.5 total with, oops, with six board members finding a commendable, zero not observed, zero unsatisfactory, and two adequate. So we did look better there. One of the positive comments under that one, Dover is a diverse community. We have been honored to once again receive the Silver Award which credits our district with meeting all means of all students. Considering the various backgrounds of the families and our students, this is something that our board is extremely proud of. Moving on to about the board under finance. And about the board, "Our board exercises financial oversight of all aspects of our district operations in accordance with statutes. Provides policy guidelines and parameters related to our goals for budgeting, development, and evaluation. Requires that all requests for unbudgeted expenditures be accompanied by specific indication of need and funding source. Balances the educational needs of students with the impact of budgetary increases. And reviews and understands and evaluates all financial reports to ensure that all educational dollars are used in efficient and effective manner." And again, this is sort of an area where if you are a board member, you may not have received all of the training with that. We, you have only gone through one budgeting process, and it's really not a sufficient time to learn about all the maneuvers of compiling the budget. You will, again, this year, be fully involved at that point. Out of a total of four, we achieved a 3.6 on that with the higher grades of one, two, three. Of those category six members who are commendable, down to the low point of one saying not observed and two saying adequate. Moving on to about the board member yourself. That you understand the relationship between our budget and our district's goals. You understand and participate in our district's budgeting process. Understand and review the monthly reports. Understand and review the results of the annual audit. From a total of a grand, total of four, again, the average is 3.1. With two being five under commendable, good, we had five also adequate, four, five, four, and unsatisfactory five and zero not observed. In reference to the budget, our district relies heavily on federal and state funding and partnership with our superintendent, business administrator and administration. We have worked for years on getting as much money into the classrooms as possible. We have made sure that these funds for professional development and technology and facilities maintenance. At this time, I can gratefully state that besides monthly bills, we are on track to paying off all debt except the addition of our East Dover campus. That means that we are completely debt-free, and I'm not sure if the public is always aware of that. It's a wonderful feeling since I was on this committee for many, many years ago when the approval was made to do the $18 million addition to East Dover, and it's well on its way to being paid off with that being our only debt. That's a commendable item in budgeting in schools in this time. Self-evaluation again, moving on, let's see. Some board members did state that they are a new member and that did not understand the budgeting process yet, and that's very truthful. It was really, it takes a while to get into this, especially if you're not on the budget committee. But we do have that large budget presentation that we do before the budget is presented for a vote to the board, and there was a ton of information at that point, and it's a PowerPoint presentation as well, so it's not just information that you have to read. Onto board operations, about the board. "We hold our meetings in compliance with applicable statutes, policies, and bylaws. We provide a climate that allows free, open, and orderly discussion by all members at our meeting. Develops and utilizes skills, teamwork, consensus building, collaboration, problem-solving, and decision-making. Uses good decision-making processes, acts only after all appropriate information has been received and studied. Acts only after giving administration time to gather information and make recommendations. Respects the administration's leadership by thoughtfully deliberating on recommendations and provides time, funding, and opportunity for orienting and updating our members on local, county, state, federal levels in accordance with statutory travel regulations." And that is it. Oh, I'm sorry, there's part two to that. "Our board acts as," and our board acts both ways, as a committee of the whole, a board of the whole, and with specific committees that report to the board. Our board method of governance contributes to the overall effectiveness and efficiency of the board. Our board member type of governance has clearly been defined by bylaws. Our board method of governance lessens the total work of board members individually. Our board and method of governance ensures appropriate communication to the board." And again, out of a grand total of four, we averaged 3.0 on that. These numbers are all over the place because of the, this is a broad topic. We have half of the, a little less than half of the board, I would say, were under commendable, then broken out to good, adequate, unsatisfactory. There are quite a few, let's see, under that. And under not observed, we have two. With that in mind, it seems to be that this, again, is an area that we are lacking in all board members feeling comfortable in how the board operates under our operations. This is definitely something that I have already spoken to school boards about and sought guidance in what training we can have. They were, they wanted to be here either this evening or at our October 3 meeting, but they're not going to be available until mid-October, and once they are available, they're going to come to us to try and address these issues by means of training. Okay. You, the board member in this area. "Introduce new issues through the agenda process, allowing sufficient time for appropriate study. Recognize the importance of teamwork, problem-solving, and effective decision-making. Attend workshops to increase my effectiveness as a board member." Again, with the commendable being a four, the average was 3.4. Six members being commendable, three good, three adequate, zero unsatisfactory. There was a concern that some board members are not coming to the board meeting prepared. It is, we have talked about the importance of trying to read everything before you come to a meeting so that you feel like you are fully involved in the process of the board so that you can vote. Several board members saying they are not satisfied at all with the performance of the full board in this area. We need to work on better communication and collaboration, and again, supporting the superintendent. Moving on again to, this is another portion for board performance, about the board. "Recognize the authority rests with the board as a whole sitting in a legally authorized board meeting. Make every effort to attend all board meetings, coming prepared and having done their homework. Recognizes the need for and the importance of confidentiality. Works together in an atmosphere of mutual trust and respect. Ensures that all members have input into decision. Avoids even the appearance of impropriety or conflict of interest. Operates in accordance with the board member's Code of Ethics and the Code of Ethics Act." Out of a total of four, this one was a low score at 2.9, indicative of the same comments that I mentioned before that the board feels that it is not working well together with many factors that I'm not going to rehash at this point. I'm not going to point fingers, and I'm not going to cause unnecessary discussion that's only going to make matters worse. We will work on this. The board will start working together. They will have to. They will have to. About you as the board member. "Make no personal promises nor take any private action. Make every effort to attend all meetings, having done my homework and prepared to contribute. Maintain the confidentiality of board proceedings. Am respectful of everyone at our meetings, and I will listen with an open mind and adhere to ethical standards." Out of a total four points, we've received a 3.8. So in that portion of it, the board member individually feels that they are doing their job. They just don't feel that together as a full body, the board is doing their job. Okay. Moving on to board superintendent relationships. "About the board. Respects the management responsibilities and administrative prerogatives of the superintendent. Works with the superintendent in a spirit of mutual trust and confidence. Maintains ongoing open lines of communication and observes the chain of command. Keeps the superintendent informed about community, school issues, and aspirations. Conducts a comprehensive and fair annual evaluation of the superintendent's in accordance with the statute and code of New Jersey CUSAC. Works with the superintendent to develop performance objectives for evaluation that consisted, that are consistent with district goals and in compliance with the district policy. Requires regular dialogue on progress towards district goals and objectives, student achievement, and feedback on performance." The commendable being a four, another low, very low area of 2.6. In this area, in my personal opinion, having observed what has gone on over the past several months, I believe that some board members did not have the opportunity to partake in a lot of presentations, such as the one that we had this evening, where there is open dialogue about the district goals and where we are. Over the next several meetings, we'll be meeting with our administrators, our principals to go over test, state test scores results. When we do that, the principals will also give an action plan. Here are our test scores. This is how we did. This is how we feel about how we did. Did we meet the goals that we had set for those test scores? And here's the action plan. New board members had not yet partake in that, and the reason being, last year was a turbulent year on the Dover Board of Education because of many activities that had taken place that were emergency situations that happened outside of our control and took away the focus, I think, of what the board should have been doing. We should have been giving these presentations to the public, but because we were so busy putting out fires, is that a good word? We were so busy putting out fires with the media, with social media, it distracted us. It distracted the Board of Education, and we did not do that. That, this was the first year that we have not done that. Anyone who's been to our board meetings before 2016 into '17 knows that we have given presentations, our supervisors have done wonderful presentations about our department heads. Our principals do the annual review every year about their test scores. This, the past year, we did not. We did get updates from Mr. Becker about how we did, but we did not have these presentations, and I think that's unfair to the board. I think it's unfair to the community, and I think it's certainly unfair to the students and the administrators who work so hard and our teachers to achieve. So we are going to work on that this year, and we have started. We have already started. Moving on to board staff relationship. "About the board. Provides effective personnel policy direction and oversight. Recognizes the importance of staff development and provides the necessary time and funds. Provides republic recognition of staff achievements. Treats district staff with courtesy and respect, recognizing what's at the appropriate channel for board staff communication is through the superintendent. And ensures that our actions and decisions are quickly and effectively communicated to the staff." Out of a total of four, we did an average of 3.1 on that, with the scores being a little bit all over the place. We had four members saying unsatisfactory, two members saying adequate, and the remainder saying commendable and good, split very evenly. About you, the board member. "Communicate all concerns about staff members to the superintendent. Use and enforce the chain of command. Attend school and community events." From the four, total of four points, we received 3.8 on that, with seven members saying commendable and the remainder of the board members saying good. And for the most part, most board members, I know, thoroughly enjoy attending events at our schools. A board and community, about the board. "Acts as a representative for every child in our school district. Anticipates community issues and trends affecting our district. Encourages community involvement in the district. Promotes community use of school facilities. Builds partnership with the community business and governmental leaders. Provides opportunity for meaningful parental involvement and has an effective community relationship, relations program." I'm sorry. Under the total of four, this one was a little bit lower at 2.8. And again, I believe some of this is either miscommunication or misinformation because my experience here, almost 15 years, we, our facilities are quite open to the community. For many, many years, we were the only facilities in the town of Dover. The town of Dover did some work initially just a few years ago after bonding, and they did some updates at Crescent Field, but for years, we were the only location for recreation. And we, without limit, opened it, opened up our school to soccer, football, track, basketball. Basketball, thank you, Kathy. We have had extensive and expensive rehabilitation and redoing our Hamilton Field complex to the point where now we have a state-approved track that we can have track meets on. We could not do that for years and years and years until we had to rebuild the track. We have a beautiful football field with AstroTurf that can be used by soccer and football. That's open to the community with many, many. You see us approving use of facilities all the time. All of our elementary schools are used for the rec soccer program with the town. We collaborate with the town with their rec track program. We collaborate with the town with attending their tree lighting ceremony. Our school district goes to the tree lighting program. We allow, no, besides the tree lights program, we collaborate with some nursing homes in the area. We have our middle school students who bring their van there at Christmas time in St. Carols and bring them goody baskets with the, I believe it's the Key Club or the Builders Club brings baskets to the, so we collaborate fully with our community. Our facilities are open to recreation through the use of facility permit. We try to limit what the cost is for that to our taxpayers through that. We try to limit it to basically our janitorial services and anything that's going to cost too much money that puts us over a line on budget item as far as using the facility. That's something that it would be extensive lighting if the lights had to be on for a longer period of time. So I think some board members that feel that we're not open to the community, they're just not aware of it. All of our playgrounds with playground equipment at our elementary schools are open during daylight hours, even at night. Mr. Gomes, are our gates at our playgrounds locked at night?
No.
No, they're not. So, and it takes our handlers nowadays a little bit longer to check, check the playgrounds in the morning to make sure they're safe, that there aren't, isn't any garbage that would not be appropriate for young kids to find in the morning when they're using the playgrounds. So that takes us a little bit longer to do that, but those are open. I don't know what more I can say, but if, if I could be any firmer on the fact that our community does use our resource. I have, I have an interesting story to share. I know some board members will remember this. A couple of years ago, when my daughter was attending college in Buffalo, and we were up there, and I got an irate phone call from a community leader, an elected community leader, who, son was playing baseball, recreation baseball on North Dover Field, on Kink Field at North Dover. And there were some adults, had done a game of soccer on the blacktop behind North Dover. That is not, it's not a legitimate field, but they had taken up using that. And the elected official called me and was irate because the soccer ball was going over into the outfield of the baseball and hitting little kids in the head. They were getting, it was constantly, it was happening all afternoon long, and I was asked, "Well, what can you do about it?" I said, "Well, you're an elected official. Please call the police. This is not, there's no permit available for that. It's not a field. It's a playground at the rear of a school." So even those areas are basketball courts. Even those areas are used. You'll go, go by North Dover at night, you'll see kids riding their bikes. Go by Academy Street School, you'll be seeing families up there. Come out here at the high school at night, you see families walking around the perimeter of the parking lot. So it's used. It's used by the community. Identifying, this is a synopsis at the end of the report. This is done by board member input and then put into a synopsis form from school boards. "Identifying the challenges that face our district. Recognizing that your board's highest priority is to improve student achievement. What are three major challenges currently facing your district? Never-ending challenge of improving state test scores." It just seems like we are always chasing our tail on that one. We get to one point, and they change the test or they change the benchmark, but we keep, we keep running. "State and federal funding will need to be monitored closely. The changes with that." Student mobility continues to be a major issue and challenge in our district and in our town. That means students that are moving in and out of the district that we are just not able to keep track of. Without using that as an excuse, the superintendent finds that, of course, unacceptable, and so does the board. We never use that as an excuse, but we have to, it's a reality. If we're, we have 3,000 students in the district at one point and jump to 3,400, we've got to find space for those students. We have to provide teachers for those students. We have to teach those students and then face all of the challenges along with that. "Influx of students not prepared for anticipated grade level." That would be students perhaps coming from another country. The grade levels are not the same as what we have here. They have to be tested, so it takes a little bit longer to try and find the appropriate place for them to be. That's, that's a frustration. "People running for office with personal agendas, running for board office with personal agenda, where that's, that should never be happening." And lack of parent involvement overall. I know that that is a problem, not only just with our district, it's, it's a problem with all districts, but it's a big problem with our district. Okay. Moving on to, "In maintaining our appropriate role as policymaking body through effective oversight, what specific areas of board governance require additional focus and training about your board?" Policy review, dealing with the immigrant student population and making sure that we support them. We need to focus more on new board member knowledge transfer. We've had board members that come and go onto the board, and it's a lot easier when there's one new board member or two new board members. We have to find a way to make sure that the board members come on. For the first time ever, I think I've mentioned this before, we did do a new board member orientation for our new board members before they were sworn in even, and we made sure that all board members were giving a New Jersey School Board's boardsmanship manual, which again, this was the first time we've ever done that. Again, board members feel that our board is in a state of transition. So, again, board members feel that our board is in a state of transition, that there has been some negativity from the public, there has been some distrust from within ourselves, and we're going to, to face all of these challenges. We're going to work as a whole, because personalities and problems that come along with personalities are, have no place on a board of education. Board of education is a being in of itself. It survives no matter what the personalities are, it survives whoever the individual people are. The board must survive, no matter who's on this board. So that is something that we have to make a priority, and we will. I'm going to ask for board members to, of course, make comments on this, but with this evaluation at this point, knowing that we need additional training, knowing that we need to go over our code of ethics again, I do not see the need right now for the code of conduct as it was proposed. I would like to suggest that we permanently table the code of conduct at this point. If, after our trainings with school board, if they can suggest something that we can recite annually, besides the code of ethics, to remind us of who we are and what we need to do, we can work on that. How does the board feel about permanently tabling the code of conduct?
I agree. I think we can do that first.
If we may have a discussion about tabling after we have a discussion about the evaluations?
Okay, we can do that, that's fine.
I was wondering, after these evaluations, do we, are we going to wait for school boards to set our board goals? Or are we going to set any, like, objectives of how we're going to?
Well, we've said our, I know what you mean, but we've already said our board goals and objectives back on Jan, June 27th. That's what we did at that reorganization meeting. But I know what you mean, school boards, yes. There will be recommendations that they are going to come to us. I've asked them to recommend whatever specific training we can receive to help our problem areas. And what other suggestions they have, it may not be training, it may be something else that needs to happen. But does that answer your question? Because I think that's what your question was.
Looking for some concrete, you know, steps.
That's what they will do, that's. She would have liked, Charlene Peterson would have liked to have been here to give this evaluation. She compiled it, she compiled the evaluation. So she would, didn't like, like to be here to present it, but as I said, she's unavailable thanks to the middle of October. Yes, did you have a question?
I do have some questions and comments about the self-evaluations, but now.
Let's do, have about two questions each until everyone is heard, is that good? Does everyone else have questions as well? Okay, we'll start with two questions.
Thank you. The first question is, have we done self-evaluations before, or this particular one?
Yes, and we have done it in two different manners. I think I explained that before. We have done it where we have compiled it with school boards online. We have done it that way. We have also done it the same way that we did the superintendent's evaluation, printing out the form, typing it out online, printing it out and doing it ourselves. And then we used to do it the old-fashioned way of writing it out. We've done it all three ways.
And then my second question for now is, on page 10, our board acts as a board of the whole, five, with specific board committees, three. If you or any other member of the board might help me understand, I understood that even though we have committees, we act as a board of the whole, meaning that we make decisions as a whole. A committee does not have the power to make decisions. So with five of us voting that...
Let me interrupt you there, because that's, I think that's the...
Can I finish my question first, ma'am?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. With five of us stating that we are a board of the whole, and three of us stating that we are aboard with specific board committees, are we misunderstanding our board, or am I misunderstanding the question?
Both, because we are both. For example, in the instance of negotiations, the committee, the negotiations committee is given the power to make decisions in negotiation, but to not to vote on them and make them firm. They are not binding until the full board votes on them. I think that's the only committee that we have that has that power to negotiate and make independent decisions. I believe that that's the only committee. The rest of the committees report back to the board on all issues, items, and all decisions are made by the full board.
And even that committee, though, does not have decision-making power, we'd say.
Well, they do, on an individual basis as negotiations is going on. Each meeting that, that takes place under contract negotiation with the unions, there are decisions made at each meeting. And then they come back and they report it to the board. And then it is, when the contract is binding, and when it is ratified, it needs to be ratified by both sides, both the union and the board, then it's voted on by the full board. But each negotiation meeting, there are independent decisions that the committee has to make. It would be impossible to go back, it would take years to do one negotiation if the board had to come back every single time and get approval from the full board. So in that instance, we do it both ways.
Okay, so if this, if it seems like maybe the system didn't allow us to do it, but the correct answer for the eight of us that did this evaluation would be eight aboard of the whole and eight specific board committees?
If, yeah, if it allowed you to do that, I don't know that it allowed you to do that, but...
Yeah, I guess maybe not, maybe that's why it's split. Okay, those are my two questions.
Okay, anybody else have anything that they want to add? Nobody else? Okay, if you have more than.
I do, thank you. The rest are more comments. My first comment is that I thank you for your graceful presentation of this evaluation. I think that it is helpful, and I look forward to looking to continuing to improve our use of it in the future. It seems that we may have used it incorrectly this time, and I look forward to focusing on student achievement. On the first page, it asks what is vital and important. And we actually were tied with planning being vital with all of us agreeing, all eight of us that did the evaluation agreeing on that. And also, eight of us agreeing on student achievement being the vital role of our, of our job here on the board. And the commentary did not reflect our requirement that we focus on student achievement. So I look forward to, to having a conversation or ensuring we do focus on that. My second comment is, um, on, there's a piece on communications, well, board and community, communications between the board and the community. And it seems that we would benefit using this as a tool from ensuring that we, when we ask questions of each other, or particularly the board president and the superintendent, that those questions are either repeated when, by the board president or the superintendent, I guess it would be the board president, when that agenda item comes up, or that, to avoid surprises, that the person, as, as I was taught to do at school boards, ask the question beforehand, and also ask the question again in public so that the entire board and the public benefits from that question and answer.
I'm confused over which question we're talking about. As we're voting on something, and I come to the portion where I'll say, we have a motion, we have a second, any questions or comments? Is that what you're talking about?
Not necessarily. So we, we have agenda items, and if I may, for example, when she was talking about one of the agenda items, she said that she had asked Mr. Becker some questions, and with Mr. Becker's answers recommends that we move forward. I don't personally know what those questions were or those answers were, and it would benefit me, you know, maybe I didn't, you know, it's a question I wouldn't have thought of. I don't necessarily have the expertise that others on here do. So if those questions are repeated and the answers are repeated, it may help us to, one, make better decisions, and two, ensure that communication with the public is transparent and frequent. In that section, you'll see that...
And if I could just ask, who would ask the question?
The person posing the question, or the board president?
So once they received, once they received the answer from the superintendent in a separate, either email, phone call, whatever it is, they should relay that. And I think we, we do do that sometimes, not all. For example, I did it tonight with the amount of reading that we had to do. I knew that that was a concern that both you and Ms. Mullen had, that you had mentioned it. So I, I knew that, so I did relay that information. But if you want that done on a consistent basis, that really is up to the board member individually, I would think. That's my opinion, I'd love to know how the rest of the board feels. Because although you may be perfectly fine with relaying that, if it's a conversation that a board member takes the time to either contact me or contact the superintendent to speak to them alone about something, I'm not sure that it's up to anyone else to make the decision whether that needs to come out into the public. If, if it's something that can benefit the full board, most definitely.
So I, I bring up this suggestion, and actually I'm sharing it, that I received from Charlene Peterson, our board rep. And I bring it up because on board and community, we rated, six of us rated that as vital to our work, and two of us, it's very important to our, our work. Yet, in the section when, where we actually break it down on planning, on board community, we were split two, 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 two. So we recognize that it's vital, but clearly, only two of us think we are commendable, only two of us think we are good at it, two of us think we're adequate, and two of us think we're unsatisfactory. So one suggestion to ensure that we are communicating with the public is that questions are and answers are available to all when pertinent and not subject to the exceptions that apply to executive session, of course.
And I, I agree with you 100%, but again, I also think that that's in between the individual board member who speaks privately to anyone, whether or not they're going to relay what their private conversation was about. I don't see anything wrong with it myself, because most of the time, that's what I do. I'll, I'll give the information that I received, because I know it may help other board members, and it's always good for the public to hear that. But I'm not, I would like the rest of the board to...
I really think, that's up to the individual board member. I mean, questions can vary, but sometimes, you know, I'll look at something that's just a little, that just doesn't make any sense to me, and I'll call up and I'll ask, what exactly are we trying to do? This doesn't have any effect on the board. Now, if, if you have a question where you think there's something wrong that the board needs to discuss, that's, that's a different scenario. It's not a, it's not a cut and dried answer for something like that. I mean, by all means, if, if there's something coming up with the agenda that we, that we see there's some type of an issue with, then, you know, you bring it, you bring it up to the board's attention. But if it's, it's just a question that, that you have on a policy or something, just for your own edification, there's no, no reason to bring that up at public meetings. It doesn't, it doesn't affect anything. It's just for your own information, so you can make your informed choice, or your informed, your informed decision, you should say.
My questions are always addressed first to the superintendent and for the president, and reiterated at the meeting for that purpose. To ensure that we all know the questions and we all know the answers. And then the third comment is, bringing it back to student achievement, which is supposed to be and is our shared one and only main agenda as board members and as members of this community. It's interesting to note where, where we rated on student achievement. And there were, were some places where we could discuss how to ensure that the board is identifying the expectations for our students, that the administration is meeting those expectations, that the board is giving guidance to the administration to ensure those expectations are high and in line with community expectations. So that's one, two, three, four. I, I really appreciated both the question and the answers in the last portion from page 19 and then 20, identifying the challenges facing your district. I think, I think all of us, I mean, there's, there's plenty of, within these different comments, plenty of commonalities. We're identifying funding, right? We're identifying population growth. I am concerned with one comment in particular, that I think, I think if we brought this question, identifying challenges, to a committee or to a wider conversation, so where we can talk about early childhood and what our needs are there, where we can talk about immigration and what our needs are there, and, and many other needs, special needs, et cetera. If we can identify the challenges and ensure that we all have the facts, and maybe, maybe it's not a committee, maybe it's some other process, I think this question would do us well in ensuring our, our planning and using this tool to the, to the best that we can. That's, I, I think that was, that was a brilliant question. And here is where I think all board members that answered, answered focus on student achievement. So I appreciate that question. And then finally, my, my question, I'm just, I think I'm confused about our goals. I thought that we had a brainstorming session about the goals, and that we were still waiting to finalize the goals, not that we have them set already. Am I...
We, the board on June 27th at our board retreat, as you know, we compiled the board's requests for goals. These were the things that the board has to work on. What we are waiting for is the state testing, and I think I explained this a couple of times.
You did, thank you.
On how it all fits together, because it's all a giant puzzle. One thing causes the next, it's all a domino effect. So we're waiting for those test scores, and that's why it all fits together.
I apologize, I thought I heard you said that they were already set.
I, I, we worked on them and we established them. I believe that's, that's how we put it. We worked on them, we established them, we set what we want, what our vision is. That's what we did. And then we have to work on putting the rest in, and we, we have just received all of that information. And there will also be, there's the stages of the goals, as I said with the presentation of the administrators. This is what our test score was, this is what we wanted. Did we meet it? Did we fail? Did we achieve it? And this is what we're going to do to make sure that we get where we're on next year.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? All right, very good. I will let board members know the available dates that Charlene has to come in and do some additional trainings to make sure that we are on track and doing everything that we should. And now that we have had the discussion, again, back to the infamous code of conduct. Thoughts?
Well, I, I think having Charlene come in and work with us, because obviously there, there are some areas that we are not in sync. And it needs to be, I think, better collaboration consensus on how all of these pieces work. So I think once we go through whatever training that she might put us through, and have those discussions on those different areas, then we may see, you know, if there's something that will put us together to keep us focused on those areas, such as the code of conduct, just to further reinforce what we need to do, then I think it might be appropriate. So I would say we table it for now until we go through the training and see how, you know, what comes out of that to determine what our focus needs to be, and if we need another mechanism or two to help us.
Very good. Also keeping in mind that during the month of October, we have several board members that are going to be going for New Jersey School Board trainings as well. So when you're looking through the schedule of events that they have, you might take out the board evaluation and hit some of the hotspots and try and see if you can make some training on some of those problem areas. Anyone else? So we'll just remain, yes, go ahead.
Madam President, as you know, the lowest score that we gave ourselves was that 1.94, works together and an atmosphere of mutual trust and respect under board performance. So clearly, a code of conduct is already necessary. I, I agree with Mr. Miller that the training from Charlene Peterson, and the training will be going in October, and ongoing discussions with each other will help us to get there. I'm concerned that the members that approached you requesting this code of conduct may not have spoken to it, since that request, at least certainly not publicly in the session.
May not have spoken or...
Whether they, they want to move forward or not. So I want to make sure that they have a chance to speak, if they want that chance. And certainly, the code of conduct, both versions, include what may be used as reminders or guideposts for us. Given this evaluation, given our commitment and reminder to work towards student achievement as our main agenda, our main goal, our main job, this code of conduct may be helpful to be like a, okay, we're starting fresh with this code of conduct, we're moving forward with some more training, here we go.
We'll see, we'll see where it takes us.
So if we table it, then we're tabling it only until...
After we...
Charlie Peterson provides...
Tabling, we're going to have it on the agenda every meeting, so we'll just take, continue to table it as it comes up until we're finished and we feel we are at a place where we can make that decision. Okay? Anything else, anyone?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
The training that you're talking about would happen during a regular meeting?
Yes.
So she would come and I guess give like a presentation that touches on the things that you're talking about?
I think, I'm not quite sure what she's going to do. She was going on, there may be also some small group training. There may be small group training where it's not going to be done at a board meeting. There may be small group training where it's not going to be done at a board meeting. I'm not really sure.
Okay, that was really my question, because I just don't know, from an effectiveness standpoint, if we have a meeting, she comes, she stands up there, she gives a presentation, you know, she asks or you ask, does anybody have a question? People may have questions, people may not, and then she leaves. I don't know, like you said, from an effectiveness standpoint, that that would really be a hard question.
I don't, I don't really, so I don't really think that any board training that is provided by school boards and, I don't know, that being on board and directors of school boards, is really intended for a public meeting forum. I just don't think that that's-
Well, unless it's a board forum, it's like the ethics that we have, the ethics training.
Yeah, it really depends what she, what she comes back with. My board training is intended for board members, it's not intended for, you know, public forum.
I know, I know.
I think I need a tiger wrap session. All of us together and really talk it out, group hug.
Yeah, I mean, the other thing, so I don't, I don't necessarily, I mean, we have to settle on, on the code of ethics. I don't think that ethics is really the big issue that we have, I think it's, it's just a matter. This survey is each board member's opinion of how this board is functioning. And, and, you know, I don't think it's an ethical question on, on any of these issues, I think it's just how each one of us views our responsibilities and what the board's responsibilities are and how we're addressing them. And it's something that we have to work together.
Well, it's an interpretation and that's what we need to talk about.
And that's, I did speak to Charlene about that because of the unusualness of this evaluation. This was completely, it was highly unusual for Dover and it's, it's very unusual for school boards to face something like this, where in, in theory, we are not following what the intent of the evaluation was, because many of us had, had made a sole indication of what our problem is, of what our hurdle is. We made a sole indication. And that's not the purpose of it. But, in all actuality, what really happened, this was eight board members anonymously filling out these evaluations individually in their own home at certainly separate timeframes, because some did them right away and some took a month to do it. So, it's different timeframes, without the knowledge of each other. I know as a board president, I was not in communication with anyone else about their evaluation until I received the report from Charlene. So it is the intention of every board member, it is the feelings, it is the thoughts, and again, it has to be done in real time. It's what you witnessed as your experience on the board. It's not your experience sitting in the audience watching something, it's not your experience what you heard from a parent, it's not your experience what you saw when you were at a back to school night in the building, it's what you experienced, how the board is acting and how you as a board member. So although, as she said, it's highly unusual, the way that this worked out, it's a true picture of what has been going on with the board and I think the board needs to heal a little bit, it needs to do it quickly and it needs to continue its function, because just like the school day, it doesn't stop. The board has requirements, it has responsibilities and it doesn't stop. So that's, that's my feeling. And I worked closely with Charlene on this. She received many phone calls from me, trying to make sure that we did this the right way. Okay, anyone else? All righty, very good. Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Just an editorial comment, I guess we'd call it, I just want to thank the board for the discussion tonight. I think it's very valuable. On September 1st, I sent the board a memo regarding the change in format of district goals and board of education goals, because I was concerned, because the goals were presented during the public workshop were not focused on academics, intended to be more on ethereal concepts, not related to academic improvement. That's the board's problem, there's no problem with that, if that's the way the board elects to go, that's fine. But historically, we've always had a very tight correlation between board goals, superintendent goals, district goals, building goals, principal goals, teacher goals and SGO. So everything was very tightly construed, so I'm actually very relieved to hear that we'll be revisiting some of the board goals and maybe looking at a lot of the academics. Toward that end, at the next meeting, the building principals will be coming in and doing a presentation on their building goals and how they did and afford some perspective in terms of how to interpret the scores. I think our teachers are doing an excellent job and quite often, a disparate score may not fully exemplify the progress being made. But toward that end, I refer everyone, because as you recall, we changed it from district superintendent, district superintendent and building goals to superintendent and district goals, we have a separate mindset right now. I refer you to the last page of that, to improve the academic performance of students as indicated by test scores. And what we do on that page is have the targeted scores for each grade level of the district, what we have to achieve according to the state of New Jersey in terms of targeted scores and the procedures we're going to do to remedy that. This may be useful for board members to refer to before the next meeting with the building principals, because I think identifying the targeted scores, which the state identifies and which we base all our evaluations and SGOs and progress on, it may be advantageous to the board to look at that page to understand what the targeted goals for each school with grade level are. And that may help next week, or not next week, the next board meeting presentation in terms of understanding the information that's being presented.
Very good.
Just to talk to Mr. Becker, just because I have like 800 different documents here. When, when did that come out? That document, September 10th?
Oh, September 1st was the memo that we sent out, but I'd be glad to, there was also-
Maybe we could send it out again?
Yeah, I'd be very glad to. And once again, we're not dictating, we're always suggesting this might be useful as a prequel to what you're going to hear from the principals.
Yeah, I think you're correct. I think we did, in our retreat, I think we did strain, that we've been off track on what we really wanted.
I found it's, it's dated September 1st, packet date.
Okay. Thank you.
Madam President, I may, I sent a typed up version of the detailed notes I took from the board's planning meeting about the board's goals, that may be helpful to have to compare and complement and contrast with the goals that Mr. Becker is suggesting, so that we may be able to merge them and get that, oh, excuse me, get us all on the same page.
And that-
Can we, can we have that together? So when, if Ms. Dennis would be so kind as to send the district goals that Mr. Becker is talking about along with the goals that the board came up with, that I typed up, I don't know if anyone else typed it up.
Actually, I'd be glad to send a copy out to the board members and your recommendations were actually incorporated into the proposed board of education goals on page two.
That is wonderful to hear, Mr. Becker, thank you.
And the thing is, what we did, they were not measurable goals, so they have to be realigned.
So we, so we work this together.
Yes, exactly.
And I thought that I had let you know that Mr. Becker had already incorporated that.
When we had, when I had it, it was the-
I'm asking for the, for all the board members to get the document, because I don't know if other folks took notes or if other folks remember those goals. I know Mr. Miller took notes and I took notes and I shared them with you and I shared them with Ms. Mullen.
Okay.
They did not share them with others.
They were incorporated into the document.
I think it was in there as well?
Yeah, it's in the document.
That's what I'm saying, I thought it was in that same email.
Yes, it is.
Right, and that's, that's the document that I requested printed, but I didn't receive, so I just want to make sure that, that we can come together.
I think it's, yeah, I think it's in there.
You got it September 1st.
September 1st, packet date.
Okay, I, I got it and I saw it.